Hello, everybody, and welcome to the planning board meeting of October 8. I think I'll let Pete explain what's going on here tonight.
Yeah, so, thank you so much, Dale. So, welcome to the planning board of October 8, 2020. It is currently 7:18, and due to the governor's emergency orders due to COVID-19, this planning board is being held via Zoom. For all people interested in calling in via the telephone, please pick up your phone and type 1-6-4-6-5-5-8-8-6-5-6. The ID for tonight's meeting is 817-902-13020. And then the Zoom will ask you to, will ask and prompt you to type in the passcode for the meeting. And tonight's planning board meeting passcode via telephone would be 989-414. So with that said, tonight's meeting is open, and we are ready to do business here on the 8th of October. Our first agenda item is, Chairman, I can present to you a continuation, a requested continuance of 300 Ellie Street Site Plan Review. And just, the planning board was sent out the requested continuance letter. I can tell you, within discussions and a conversation I had with the applicant, there is now a lighting engineer involved in the development of the plan. And they are going back and looking at the lighting design of the parking lot, which is the Bank of America ATM, and they will be submitting new renderings. They were not able to get those renderings in on time before our planning board deadline for this meeting. So they have asked for a continuance until October 22.
So, entertain a motion to continue that till the 22nd?
That would be correct.
Anybody?
So moved.
I second that.
All in favor, we'll do a roll call.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Deepavankar, aye.
Joe Roberto, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, and it passes 5-0-0. Okay, now, the second item.
So, the second item is a request for an extension of a special permit, which was originally granted by the planning board on November 26th with 2018 for 40 Cherry Street. The proposal, and the applicants are here tonight on our Zoom call, proposed the development of a brewery, and at this current time, Dave and Isabel are here as the applicants to request an extension for those permits. And so, Chairman, I would ask you to open it up to Dave and Isabel if they would, if they would like to say any words.
Yeah, Dave, Isabel?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, everyone.
Good to see you.
Hi.
You guys.
So, we submitted a letter. I hope everyone had a chance to review it. Basically, we are requesting this extension due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the effects it's had on the economy, businesses and planning such as ours, and just, you know, the kind of challenges that it presents in the business environment in general. So, we had requested specifically a two-year extension because we think that gives us enough time, depending on, you know, the timetable for a vaccine to be released and, you know, economic activity to kind of resume, you know, some level of normalcy within, you know, within that timeframe.
And then, also, just to add, you know, I hope it doesn't put up any flags for anyone. We are 100% still committed to this amazing dream of ours and this amazing addition to our amazing town. Trust me, we, you know, not a minute passes that we don't wake up in the morning and stare at that building and know what potential it has. Our plans are still exactly the same, but again, due to these unforeseen circumstances, we're asking for that extension.
Okay, anybody on the board would like to comment?
Just a question. Hi, Isabel.
Hi.
Just a question for those of us who weren't on the planning board at the time of the original permit. Is, this is a building that you now own, and how long ago was the permit granted originally?
So, it was November of 2018.
Okay, so, when, at that time, there were, you had already purchased the building. They were planned submitted, and it was reviewed at that time?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, great to see you guys again. I, I guess, I guess, you know, I'm certainly, you know, I certainly look forward to the day that you guys can make this dream a reality and get going on this project. I guess my only ask would be with this extension, that, you know, at the point at which you kind of get on the other side of this and kind of get ready to get moving again, I guess I would just ask that you kind of come back, come back in, and, you know, perhaps just spend, spend a few minutes with the board as you're about to get going again, and just revisit the plans and, and the final approved drawings and so forth. So, you know, we just, the board, whatever the constitution is at that point of time, can just get, try to get up to speed with this project, so.
We'd be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, totally reasonable, and I know, you know, it has been a couple of years, so, so that makes sense, yep.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, perfect, okay.
Thank you.
Anyway, I guess no one else was here when we approved that. Any other comments? All right, so, will we, if we approve this, will we put that in there as a condition that they come back? When they start, or just, we're just asking them to?
I could put in, I can, so typically with this deal with any extension, I obviously write, I'll write up a memo granting the extension, which will be therefore filed with the town clerk, and then it'll kind of, you know, move through that process. Typically, the extension of this matter is not recorded at the registered deeds, which is a little bit different from what the decision was actually recorded at the registered deeds. But I would say I can put it in the memo as a kind of, as a condition and/or kind of as a request of the planning board that the applicant can come in front of the planning board at the time of construction to review all plans, and then kind of something along those lines.
Yeah, mainly so that everybody's up to date on what was approved, and we're all on the same page, you know? So, it turns out the way it's approved, and that we remember all the little details that we spent some time on. So, I just didn't know if you want, we had a, you know, you could put a memo in or whatever. I'm, I'm sure you're gonna do that, come back. I don't think you're gonna say it and not do it, so.
Well, I think, if we think about, you know, Trisha, if we think about how we dealt with 12 Pond Street, where he had to come in with the final construction drawings that were as built, like, this is what's going to be built, like, I think that's the right level of kind of just checking on this, giving it time.
Yeah, I also think it gives an opportunity that if, if COVID or anything else means that you do want to make some changes in what was originally approved, we can look at those. I think everyone, you know, is excited about the project. Sorry that it has to wait so long, but it'll give an opportunity to review anything that might have changed over the course of what will be, you know, about four years at that, at that point, potentially.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, well, then I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the extension on the special permit. Is there a date?
Sorry.
It's a site plan, it's a site plan, no special.
Oh, site plan. Until, do we have to put a date on it?
I would say November 26, 2022.
November 26, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, we'll get a roll call, please.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Deepavankar, aye.
Joe Roberto, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, that passes 5-0-0, and thank you very much, you guys, and best of luck. That was.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Appreciate it, guys. Thanks.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so, third order of business is the zoning discussion about the zoning, correct?
That is correct, and so I am just going to read it off the agenda. So, the first area, the fourth item on the agenda is the discussion of the possible new zoning overlay district in the area of 123 West Union Street. And so, just to introduce Mike Herbert, Town Manager, and to set the table a little bit. 123, 133 West Union Street, before my arrival in the town of Ashland, went through a 40B permitting process for 100 units, at which time the town stepped forth and purchased the property. And since then, which is, which also includes, I believe, about seven plus acres of land, a fairly older, I would say colonial, there's a, I'm not an architectural person, but is it a colonial? Colonial historical house, which with a very large barn structure on the facility. Since the town did purchase the property, members of the town, Michael Herbert, Jim Ball, Beth Reynolds, Economic Development Coordinator, and David Foster, the project manager, have been working with a group of the Valentine, the Valentine Committee, I would say, the Valentine Property Committee, and they've been kind of working to brainstorm, I would say, the best possible reuse of the property. And so, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Michael, who hopefully can kind of fill in some of the details that I may not know of the property and kind of elaborate on some of the conversations that have been taking place revolving this property.
Michael, unmute, please.
Probably a good start, right? Thanks. Hope everybody's doing well. It's been a while since I've been before the board. So, if I'm nervous, I hope you can understand. Just like Pete said, back in 2018, the town voted to purchase the property through both a town meeting vote and a debt exclusion. Later that year, in the summer of 2018, we actually closed on the property. In January of 2019, we created a project manager position to address the projects at the Warren District, including the Warren Barn and Hall House, as well as the Valentine Property. And that person, David Foster, already knew a lot about those properties and was able to get on the scene. And for the first part of 2019, he did a lot of assessment work, made some immediate repairs that needed to happen to ensure the integrity of both buildings. As Pete mentioned, there is an older home there. It's not the original home of the Valentine Homestead, but it is older. It was 1870, and it's had a number of additions. The barn is really what makes the property special. It's kind of hard to date it. It looks like it was built originally in the 1750s and then moved to its current location in like the 1830s or 50s. So, if you see any discrepancy in the dates of when that barn was constructed, that's probably why. It has, if you ever had a chance to go inside it or look at the pictures, and Dale is a guy who knows carpentry and construction, you probably can appreciate this. It has these huge chestnut beams, which you just can't find anymore. I mean, chestnut doesn't really grow anymore, and rafters and arcade beams and things of that nature, which are really, really special, and make the, make the barn a really, really special piece of property. So, he worked on that. In October of 2019, David convened a open forum with a number, with townspeople to come and give an update on what had happened and more of the information that he'd found about the Valentine Property, including the condition, and then also get ideas, and a number of ideas were proposed, and those ideas were collected. And it was also at that time that the idea of a Valentine Reuse Committee was going to be, was introduced. So, the select board created that in November of 2019, so a little under a year ago. So, that committee is David Foster and a number of other residents. I'm officially on the committee, but I haven't really been taking part until recently because I thought it was a great opportunity for the committee as a whole to kind of get out there and do some more investigation into the uses of the property, look at some other uses or some other properties that are similar that, you know, could maybe serve as models for this project, and then hopefully put something together and put a plan together. And they did. They have brought in the Holliston Historical Society, looked at their model, which is a nonprofit organization, similar to the Ashland Historical Society, and they rent out the barn that they have there for functions and everything, and have a caretaker on scene. They looked at Natick Community Organic Farm. I don't know if anybody's had the chance to visit that in Natick, in South Natick. That is a, originally started as a true nonprofit town partnership. It's really evolved more into the nonprofit arena as it's gone on through the decades. Another property that was investigated, and when I say investigate, I mean, like, we brought the people in who were integral to moving the process forward. From the Thayer Homestead, so in Medway, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the Thayer Homestead. Joe, you're shaking your head.
I've heard of it. I'm trying to picture it, but yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a beautiful property that they purchased, renovated, and then added in addition to. They use it as community function space, and they also have a caretaker on scene who manages the functions as well. And then finally, the Josiah Smith Tavern in Weston was brought up as a model, and they, are you familiar with that?
No, I just finally got there in my head. Yes, there's, there's a really cool, that's a very cool one, actually.
It is, it is awesome. And then Josiah Smith Tavern is really neat, too, and it's got a long storied history, even after the town bought it, like 15 years ago, trying to get it to this point. Over this period, a couple of things really started to emerge. Number one, the cost to renovate the barn and the house was going to be prohibitively expensive for the town to do, do mainly to things like prevailing wage laws. And so, just to restore the properties, not necessarily make them functional, was going to be close to, you know, five to eight million dollars, which was a lot of coin, which is a lot of coin at the time, well, any time in Ashland, really. And so, the idea came to, well, maybe we could look at doing a public-private partnership. And so, right now, the Valentine Committee is actually, as we speak, working on a request for proposals to basically put it out there and get some ideas from different entities on how we could do some of these public-private partnerships. And hopefully, they would be able to incur the cost of renovating the properties. Again, they can do it much more efficiently than we can, but at the same time, create something that the town would really, really benefit from. And what has emerged in terms of, I guess you could say, a vision for this is they really would like the property to become, to promote economic development and vitality of that whole quarter, preserve the historical and agricultural character of the district, and also foster a sense of commerce, community through its commercial uses. So, that's great. I think it's in line with what everybody wants, but you see things like economic development, you see things like commercial uses, and the big problem that comes up is the fact that that property is owned residential. And so, the thought is, is, okay, well, if we want these types of uses, you know, in a zone residential, what's the best way to do it? Do you look at a zoning change for the entire section of the street, which we really didn't think was appropriate because of some of the ideas that have been coming up? And so, the idea came to fruition to be a, an overlay district. And Pete, you could probably explain the mechanics of an overlay district much better than I can, but you have the underlying zoning, which will still be Res A, but then over this single property, you have this overlay, which is, and the parameters of that overlay is outlined in the draft document that you have received. Is that a pretty good assessment of how the overlay works, Pete?
Yarmul.
Ah, yeah, so, we're still, we're obviously still working on that draft document and sketching out kind of what this area would be. But, you know, overlay district, I think most of the planning board members were on this. Well, I know Dale and Trisha and Joe were on the planning board as we use the overlay district for 12 Pond Street to permit that project. So, overlay district theoretically lays over an area in town or certain kind of parcels of land, and a developer and/or owner could therefore use this overlay district as a permitting mechanism for a certain type of uses that would be kind of laid out in that overlay district, I would say. So, it's very similar to zoning. It's a, it's a very widely often-used tool within zoning, and it would be adopted such, very similar to any zoning proposal that one or any town makes throughout the town, I would say. So, it's, it would still have to go to a town meeting vote. Public hearing would have to be held by the planning board when, you know, when everything is appropriate. However, it's a very, it's a widely-used permitting mechanism throughout the state of Massachusetts.
So, Mike, I have a question about that. So, what kind of use, as you said, commercial and economic development? What kind of, like, businesses, or what were they thinking, like? I heard bed and breakfast. I heard, you know, a dance hall with something else, and, you know, I mean, so what are they looking at? Like, what kind of uses are they, you know, to narrow it down a little more than just economic development or commercial? Has there been any discussion on what types of, how they would put businesses in there, or? And then also, also, if somebody else is developing it, we still own it. But how does that work, where they get their money back, you know, or?
Okay, well, the first question, Dale, is, so, some of the things that have really been specified are, like you said, a bed and breakfast restaurant, like a farm-to-table type of restaurant, a function hall, an event space that could be utilized for the town, catering services, non-exempt educational uses. At that point, I think we were wondering, should we go down the path of trying to think of every single use that could possibly be a good use for the town and include that in this? Or do we give some examples, and then do we give the planning board the ability to determine if a proposal comes before the planning board for a special permit, you would have the ability to make a decision if that proposal or that proposed project meets the purpose of the overlay district as outlined in the beginning? So, that's the first one. The second one, we're looking at different options. There's a lease option. There's certainly a purchase option where, you know, an entity would, could purchase the property from the town and then do that work. We're really concerned about the ability, so if something like that was to happen, we really want to make sure that we protect the integrity of the historical aspect. So, actually, we'll be including a deed restriction that must be declared as part of the property. So, the hall or the, the hall, the barn could not change from the outside, or the house could not change from the outside as well.
So, and so, Michael, I mean, the thing, the thing to remember, I would just bring up here, is the CPC funds were used to acquire both the land as part of that package of money to buy the land and the, and the property. So, I just think we need to make sure we're staying inside the lines on that.
So, it's, so that's one of the major complications with this, and we also use several different buckets.
Yep, historical open space, I think, if I recall, yeah.
Joe, what do you, Joe, what do you mean by stay inside the lines when you?
So, when a, when a property is acquired by using, even partially by CPC funds, the, the property, the structure needs to be permanently deed-restricted to keep the property in the vein of the use. So, if it was bought with open space, it needs to continue to be open space. If it's a historical home, both of which, I think both of those pools of money were used, the historical home, that structure needs to be permanently preserved on the property. And, you know, and so.
So, while the exact, so while the exact use could be flexible or unknown at this time, there are several things that must be taken into account and followed.
Yeah, and, yeah, so, like, I would just say, like, the town couldn't sell, you know, sell the, sell the, the town maybe to sell the property to a private entity, but that private entity would not be able to get rid of the barn or the home because that's a historic property, and that's part of what the town voted to appropriate CPC funds to preserve, right?
And would there be any?
If it's useful, I have up an Ashland zoning map, if anyone's unfamiliar with where the property is.
And I was wondering on this whole thing, would they be adding buildings? Or just preserving the ones that are there?
That's, they, they would have the potential, I believe, to add, but there are different, there are parameters in terms of what could happen, like what, I mean, there would have to be buffering requirements, height restrictions, you know, things of that nature, that's.
It seems like on some of these examples that you gave, that I'm not sure, but it looks like maybe structures could have been added, or the examples, they could have had parts added, you know, to make the program work more efficiently. But of course, I assume those would have been done in trying to make the whole project more unified and more useful, which is something that would obviously come before the planning board eventually.
Yeah, and under an overlay, it's a special permit. It was granted by the planning board. It wouldn't be a super majority, but Trisha, that's a, that's a good example. Like, if you looked at the barn and you envisioned that as a function space, and you wanted to create a function space, but you needed, like, a commercial kitchen to make that actually work, you would probably add something like that in the back. It wouldn't, it would be hard to incorporate it as part of the actual barn structure, so. So, that's, that's one thing, Joe, and that's one, one of the things that has been complicating this.
I get it.
The other thing that's complicated is, and I don't have to get into it that much, is, you know, when we, when we borrow money to do things like acquire land or do projects and everything, a lot of those are tax-exempt municipal bonds. And so, you have to be careful in terms of using tax-exempt municipal bonds to fund private entities and corporate entities. And so, we've had to work with bond counsel and legal counsel to make sure that we're within the four parameters of that as well.
So, there's still some work to be done.
Michael, for whatever it's worth, I mean, wouldn't a medium-term lease, you know, between the town and a private entity, keep the property under the ultimate control of the town, but enable the activity that we would, we, we think we want to encourage as a town?
Yeah, it, that could be an option. I think where we might see the rub is how much is somebody willing to put into something in terms of money that they won't necessarily own? And we won't really know until we get, until we get some proposals back.
Got it, yeah.
There are a couple of businesses here in town that have invested significant amounts of money in places that they don't own, and it has worked, but it has been a little bit hairy, especially with COVID, how it's impacted them.
So, the residential A district that this property now sits within, what is allowed in residential A? Peter, is that single and?
Single family, it's single-family residential houses, 30,000 square feet, which is around 0.4 acres with about 150 feet of frontage. And so, it doesn't really allow for too much of an economic development or a bed and breakfast, or, you know, some things that are being. You know, some things that are being talked about, a, a wedding event space, uh. Anything of that nature. Uh, you do kind of run into when you start talking about exempt educational opportunities. You do kind of run in a little bit into the Dover Amendment in Massachusetts, which exempts. Pretty much all educational uses and religious uses. Uh, but if it's going to be, if the community wants to see this. Kind of take shape around a economical, they create economical, in my eyes, they create an economical asset. Right? For the town of Ashland. Uh, in a economic asset, I would say, or a. Uh, a, a asset that is an attractive asset along the one third, you know, along West Union Street. I think, you know, some of these changes or this, this, this discussion needs to happen concerning zoning. Um, to kind of cut this ball, can, can I get the ball rolling in, in a, in a, in a positive direction? Uh, to open up, I would say, some of the tools and or uses one could do on the property. Uh, it's a beautiful property. I've walked in a little bit. I can't say I have been into, inside the barn. Uh, but, but it's a large property and, and um. And I do just kind of want to circle back when Joe was talking about CPC funds. The three pillars of CPA are historical, uh, recreational, open space. I'm sorry, four pillars. There's a historical, open space, um.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. And I'm, I'm missing one, I'm sorry. Uh, so typically ten.
Historic, open space, recreation.
Recreation and affordable housing. So typically on a yearly, you know, really a, a yearly basis that ten percent of the money. The town takes in needs to be put in each four of the pots. And the other sixty percent of the funds can be kind of. Uh. Spent accordingly up to the, I would say, the purview of the CPC committee. Um, and so in this case, speaking for Joe and Michael. Uh, I would say open space and historical funds or pots of money, uh, were used within this process. So um, that is just kind of part of a little, 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 little background on the CPA kind of uh, portion of the development.
And I assume no matter what request for proposals goes out, um. No matter how many proposals are received, none of them have to be accepted. So until, until the right thing comes along, there's no pressure to. To choose something.
Yeah, the only pressure, Tricia, would be the pressure to get something done while the property is still upright.
Right.
That's, you know, um, that's really kind of the only pressure that's. Um, and you know, we hope we get some good proposals. We might get no proposals. Um. But, and just to explain what would happen there is the Valentine Committee would review the proposals. Um, interview the top ones, um, make a selection, actually would present that to the select board. Um, and the, the select board accepted it. We would need to advance it to town meeting. Um, because town meeting for either a lease or a, a sale would need to vote. To allow that to happen. So there's that checks and balance as well.
And, and Trish, just to kind of double back on, well, just took a scan through the zoning bylaws. So. Under principal uses is a residential use within residential A. Uh, it would be the single family dwelling, which we just spoke about. Also allowed is uh, assisted living facilities. Uh, planning board, uh, by special permit would be cluster developments, senior residential communities. And then you kind of get into the exempt uh, in, in institutional uses, which are. For the most part allowed, um. And I can get into these a little bit later in detail if, if one would like. But also agricultural uses are, are allowed and exempt uh, for the purpose of agriculture. Um, other parts of the whole, uh, no more than, than five acres, obviously it's greater than five acres. So. Uh, there is a little bit of flexibility, I would say, right now for anybody, but it, it is fairly stringent. When you get into those uh, development opportunities.
Yeah. And the one, and all of those, all of those opportunities, which are, you, you know, they have some various types of group housing sometimes. But all of those even would have to maintain the barn and the property, not tear them down. They would have to be used. For such facilities, right? Even though they're, I assume they're. Those, those options, those kind of options that you mentioned generally aren't um. Lucrative, I guess, you know, in, in, in a way of, of having to reuse a property like this, that is probably ill suited. For those types of spaces.
Yeah, exactly. You hit the nail right on the head.
Anybody else? Anyone from the public like to chime in? Mark?
Enjoying hearing about all the zoning things and rez A and. What the town's gonna go through, but. I have a couple of questions on this that through the chairman. Through, through the uh, our, our wonderful town manager, who loves that barn to no end. I'm thinking because you said it takes, it works on the tax base. What does that mean to a regular citizen on their home tax bill? That's one question. Another one would be. Building on that lot. If the developer, whoever developed it is going to have a hard time expanding. Because it is all brush and all wooded area and wetlands and stuff like. And plus the town meeting has a good say. And I'd like, I'd like to change what the thought was about the, the road itself, to change it from a. Res A to a brand new zone mix. Because that can be historical district because of the barn. So you can put that in and. If anything for a business, whatever they want to put in, whatever develops or whoever comes in to buys it. An entity, it should work harder. So the economic would be, but not. Food retail, I think, but a business that can grow with the town, but still have an historical. Look, look of it. Thank you.
Comment on that, Mike? Yeah, um, I'm gonna con, I'm gonna take a shot, um, especially at the first one. And Mark. I think what you asked was how does the commercial tax base help residential tax base? Is that accurate? Okay. Um, and I will try to keep this as simplistic as possible. You know, currently. What you, what you want to try to do is make sure that the com, the taxes that you bring in. Is, is more than the taxes that you have to expend in terms of services, if that makes sense. And so obviously, the biggest cost for any municipality and Ashland's included is the cost of the schools. So the commercial business requires the same type of, same police response, same fire response, same type of administrators. It benefits from administrative services as well. But the thing is, is that commercial entities don't bring in kids. So from that standpoint, you come out ahead from a tax perspective. If, if that makes sense, when you bring in commercial businesses. That's one angle. The other angle is that we have things like um, the meals tax. Which if you have something like a restaurant or any place where you're going to have prepared foods, you'd be able to collect that from that property. Um, and then things just, if there's equipment, um, you know, personal property tax, things of that nature. So. Um. I hope that answers your question.
It does. And again, through the chairman, to town manager, you know, I kind of been, me working, trying to work with you and Beth Reynolds and all, all that about. The businesses, economic and all that. And I've been going to that micro enterprise things and stuff like that to get. Ashton to help out with an economic growth. So retro West 495 can see what Ashland is. And I'm trying to work that out, but I'm with the barn, historical, I can understand keeping that and making it. A still a jewel of the town for Ashland how it was back in the Henry Warren years and stuff like that to keep that going. But I'm also looking at twenty, twenty and beyond.
Yeah, we want to get beyond twenty twenty, Mark. Let's be clear about that.
Way beyond.
Twenty twenty can't end soon enough.
No, and then um, and the, and the, and with the cover, you, you kind of handcuffed a bit. Because you can only go so far. With it. So if we ever get a vaccine, let's hope it helps. Go ahead for what it's worth. And then the, the Valentine state, I never, truthfully, let it be told, I never was a fan of it. I was always something to go ahead, not look back. But, but it's, I'm done right here. I'm done after this. But I'm also want to see it expand. With the future market value of jobs and businesses coming down the road, which is. Other than hospitality and all that, it's health size bio and all those things that can still, you got, you got five, you got economic. Because your economics you can work on. So, thank you.
So Mike, just a question, is any of, any of these people working on this or committee groups? Have any estimate of like when the barn might just totally collapse?
No, um.
I mean, it's, it's, I've heard that it's pretty, you know, it's a little dicey already, but. I mean, there's, there's a timeframe, like in a couple of years, it's going to be beyond repair, like the corner spot building or?
Well, I don't think we have like a timeline in place. The experts that we brought in say, you know, you need to do it sooner rather than later. They feel like, you know, the winter season can be pretty harsh. A lot of people focus on the roof. Um, and because that's obviously the most visible and you see the big holes and everything and the sheathing and stuff. Um, that's not actually the biggest issue. The rafters and everything there, they're so solid. Um. What's really the issue is the foundation.
Yeah.
And, and so that's, I could show you some pictures, but you know, we don't necessarily want to put them on. Doesn't look pretty.
We have, you have people submitting, you already are out there trying to get people to submit projects or ideas and.
Yeah, once, you know, once the RFP goes out, um, I know Beth's going to be in high gear. Um. Actually, everybody on the committee, myself included, will be, um. You know, putting it out to the community and trying to find different people to be interested in this. Um, there's a lot of people who express. Um, the desire to bring more commercial, well, town residents who. Express a desire to bring more commercial and wish we would bring more commercial into town and stuff. And. This could be a good opportunity for them to step up to the plate and actually make that investment and actually make that dream happen. Just like Dave and Isabel have done, you know, they've, they've went out on a limb on, on their own. Uh, put up their own capital to kind of pursue this dream in best interest of Ashland. So it'd give them an opportunity as well.
So I, I just, I, I mean, I, I guess I just. You don't know until you get the proposals, but like, are you envisioning that somebody is going to propose? Using the barn and the home in a manner discussed and then want to add commercial structures in addition on the property? Is that where? Is that where you think this conversation is going? Or like, because to me, that's. You know, i- if it's, i- if it's an addition that connects to the existing structures and fits in with the. Intent and the feel of the property and the use, like that's one thing, but if somebody. Like, we're not talking about somebody. Using this for that and then coming over here and doing a separate structure and putting up commercial square footage. Is that like? I just want to get a sense of what the.
You know, I think you made the correct assumption. It's really not, we won't really know until we see the proposals. But I don't think anybody has ever envisioned something like that. I mean, if there is any kind of addition. To the buildings, I think people feel like it's an addition to the existing building to make it function. Um, for that. And you know, the interesting thing is, you know, you look at the house, the back of the house is um, much more later addition. Um. You know, I don't think there's any appetite for putting on anything else.
Yeah. So the only other thing that came to my mind, Michael, is if, if there's structural challenges with the barn. I mean, David Foster should come back to the CPC and look for some more historical funds, even if it's. Shorter money to shore stuff up and buy time. I mean, when David Foster came to the CPC years ago at this point. We, right, you know, the money was provided to kind of button things up for the winter and to sort out some of the pieces with the house and that happens. But it's obviously a few years later, we continue to have winters. So like, you know, um. I mean, obviously any requests have to go to town meeting and so the timeline on that's challenging, but um. You know, I, like, while we're figuring this out, maybe David should get going with doing something like that, um, because that's. Uh, I mean.
Interim.
It's, it's, it's certainly, it's certainly an appropriate use. So.
Joe, definitely appreciate you.
My humble opinion, and obviously there's a, there's the rest of the committee that has to weigh in on that, but the CPC, but anyway.
Yeah, that, Joe, I really appreciate you, you bringing that up and expressing that. I know that there has been talk about, about that. Um, especially if we don't get any like real good proposals. Um, you know, we have to have a plan B to make sure that.
Yeah, I was kind of just asked that. Is there, has there been discussions about what if no proposals come through or nothing that really makes sense? What's the town next stage for the town to, to save that property?
Yeah. So we've got, we've received estimates to restore the foundation in varying degrees of, um. Completeness, I, it's not the right word, but that's the only word I can come up with right now. I mean, we have a minimal cost option that kind of just shores everything up. And then you've got a couple million dollar proposal that just restores the foundation altogether.
What's the low end number, Michael?
So the low end is, um, with prevailing wage, it's probably going to be around fifteen or twenty. And I, we would be able to utilize facilities or existing capital, non-CPC money. That, so that's certainly um, on the table and ready to go if we need to do that. It might be one of those things, Joe, where, you know, we have to do that interim piece and then we go back to CPC for a larger. Um. You know, a larger chunk of money to do something more substantial with the foundation.
All right. Well, thanks for coming and starting that conversation and letting everybody know where it's at. Appreciate everybody's hard work. I mean, there's a lot of people in town that are, you know, discussing what's going to happen with this property. And so. It's good to have some information out there.
Excellent. Is, is there anything that you would like to specifically request moving forward or do you just, would you like to see a draft of what the?
I would like to see a draft and then some, some proposals if that, you know, when they come around, that would be. See what kind of ideas developers have.
For, for, for what it's worth, um, you know, from my perspective. I think the cleanest way to do this would be such that the boundaries of the, the zoning area, the area that we're asking for the change in zoning to coincide identically. With the property lines of the Valentine property. I think, you know, any deviation from that opens up questions and thoughts and makes it. A harder conversation than it necessarily might need. Um, so tha- that, that's my only two cents there. Like we're trying to get things through easy. And then I think, um. Again, my opinion, you know, as narrow and as broad as we need to be, but like, let's, you know, let's not. Let's not have this thing be, you can drive the Mack truck through it in terms of the breadth of what it says. Like, let's, I, I think. The more thoughtful it is, the better. I don't think we wanna leave it wide open. I also don't think you wanna have it be so narrow in scope that it's difficult. It makes your, your life harder in trying to find the partnership, right?
Okay, anybody else on the board? I guess that, thank you, Mike, for coming in and explaining a lot of that to us.
Thank you for giving me.
Thank you.
All right. And just to jump in, obviously, I'll be working with my, Emma and I will be working with Michael and Jen and, and, and. And hopefully developing something with them. So, I'm sure this will be back on the agenda at some point.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank, have a good rest of the meeting.
Which is, are we to minutes now?
So, we are to administrative matter. I'm sorry. Yes, we're at the minutes, September tenth.
Trish already read them, huh? Find anything this time? Mute. Unmute.
I have not read all of them, but I am on line seventeen, and I know that that principal's name is not correct. It's Janet. And the last name begins with an S, but I can't remember quite what it is. So, we should probably check all of the names. All of the more unfamiliar names to make sure we have them spelled correctly in the minutes. Soon we can have, um.
Anybody else? Joe? Working on it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still working on it, sorry.
From your nice resort over in Hawaii.
It's New Zealand, man. It's New Zealand.
Where in the world is Joe Rubito?
While Joe's reading that, anybody else wanna mention anything else or any events or any comments on anything?
I have one com- um, just announcement, actually, there's a, um. Peter had provided a link for me when I joined the planning board for, um. Oh, and remind me if I get the initials wrong, Peter C. The C M.
CTPS. Citizens Training Plan, I'm sorry, Citizens Training Planning Collaborative.
Yes, and so, on their website, they have some. They were supposed to have a conference to be held in like March or May or something, but of course, that got canceled. I think it was May, it got canceled right away. But now they have some online courses that are free. Um, that you just take them, y- you know, at your own, uh, at your own pace that might be useful. Um, for, you know, I'm, I'm, I signed up for the two that they, I think there's only two that they have. But I signed up for them. I haven't started them yet, but, um, Lakshmi and Deepa might wanna look into that too.
Yes.
One's on subdivisions, and I can't remember what the other one is about.
Trisha, do you have the links that you can send us, please?
I, I will, yeah, I have them.
Okay, thank you.
Then I can send them, send them out.
And last to me, I can, I can send them out. I, I, I've, I, so, so, thank you so much, Trish, for mentioning that. I've actually gone to the events, uh, the CTPS training events, and, and I find them very. Um, informative, and typically a lawyer or a planning director, uh, would host the events. Uh, and I've taken them just myself. I usually think they're really good, cause they remind me of certain items within a subdivision or with a special bar. So. Um, there are two free conferences right now, as Trish mentioned. Um, typically, these were held in person. At, you know, fairly, at different town halls throughout different kind of planning regions. Um, I do wanna say, if they go live with training, uh, I think the trainings are like forty dollars. I'm happy to pay in the town, typically will pick up the tab for any planning board members that are interested in, uh, taking these trainings. So. Um, and I'm happy to coordinate with that, with Emma, you know, me and Emma can coordinate signing up, signing anybody up and. And getting those invoices paid. Uh, so, so if you do see something, don't be afraid to, uh. To, to, to let me know and, uh, and to sign up for.
Awesome.
Uh, thanks, Trisha, for mentioning that.
I'm looking forward to actually learning some of that stuff myself, so.
Um, on the minutes, I have just one slight thing. Row, row fourteen or fifteen. Mr. Mignani also noted that the building will be geothermic. So, just, Mr. Mignani also noted that the building will be heated and cooled. Geothermically.
Geothermally.
Geothermally to align with the town's green commitment. Just for clarity.
Um, and on line forty-seven, forty-six, forty-seven. I don't, I don't remember asking about the site's lighting plan. I think that was. I think that was somebody else. I don't remember asking about that. I asked about the exterior layout, including community space. Um, but I remember the lighting plan being asked about, but I don't think that was me. I have to, maybe I'd, maybe I'd be wrong if I went back and looked at the video, but, um. Trying to remember what I would have been asking about.
Emma will check it and see.
Oh, you know, actually, well. I might have, I might have been asking if.
But that, we've had a couple of meetings on that.
Yeah, it could have been.
All right, anything else? These are from Pete, what date? I don't have it right here.
September tenth.
September tenth. All right, you know, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September tenth with the changes that we discussed.
Don't move.
Uh, second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Rubiton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye. Pass is five zero zero. Um, any other business?
I do wanna mention to, um. I'm sorry, one minute.
Well, really quick, I'll mention that they're changing the dormers over there at one twenty-eight, and just from driving by, it looks so much better. Just from what they started doing. So, I'm happy with that.
That's awesome.
What a difference.
Yeah, I saw them, I saw the crane, the truck with the, um, not the crane truck, but the, the lifts, the lift truck over there. And they were doing that.
Yeah, saw a couple guys rebuilding those, and it, it's amazing the difference, just that little roof makes on the side.
Just to update everybody, I was just trying to put the email together. I'm sending out the link to the citizens. Uh, planners, it's CTPS, Citizens Planner Training Collaborative. And so, I'll send that along. Yeah. Uh, there's too many things in planning, you know.
Yeah. Acronyms get all mixed.
Acronyms are getting in the way, I would say. Uh, I do wanna mention that last night at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, they, uh, the Board of Selectmen supported, voted to support. A friendly forty B development, which is gonna be known as, uh. Arbella at Ashland, which is going to be a senior living facility, uh, sixty-two plus. Off the MBTA access road. Uh, that development will not be in front of the planning board. It would actually go in front of the, the zoning board of appeals. Uh, so the planning board will not be the permanent authority on it. However, it's a fairly large development. They're planning for about a hundred. Uh, in eighty units, I believe, a hundred and eighty-two units. Um, I have the site plans in my office. If anybody's interested to take a look at them, and, and I, Emma and I could send you a link for those. Um, as that project, I would say, continues to gain some speed. Um, at this point, the developer will be applying to the Department of Housing and Community Development for what is known as a. A project eligibility letter, which is their kind of, I'm gonna say, quote-unquote, ticket. Uh, to then therefore apply to the town within the forty B process. And so, that is happening. Uh, and I also do wanna mention, I believe, um, I, I'm sure most of, everybody is, is, has been talking. Uh, the owner of ten to fifty Main Street, Rich Gordon, i- is starting, has been talking with the, with the town. And has presented in front of the Board of Selectmen, uh, a forty R process, which is a total, which is a zoning change. Uh, in a re- which would therefore, uh, allow him to propose a. The redevelopment of ten to fifty Main Street, which is known as the Mill Building. And so. Um, Rich Gordon, uh, has, has been meeting with the Board of Selectmen, um, if, if anybody has any conversations. Outside of, uh, the planning board matters, uh, that process is, uh. Starting to be talked about in mayor, you know, may, may or may not be taking shape as this, uh, process moves forward. And so, a forty R district, um, not to, to spend too much time on it, it's a special. Zoning legislation at the state level, uh, that many communities have adopted. Uh, that looks to help promote economic development and density and housing. Within downtown core districts and also areas that are within, uh, certain distances from, I would say, transportation networks. In this case, it would be the Ashland, uh, train station. Uh, and so the forty R district would. Be just upon that property, which would be ten to fifty Main Street. Um, and it would really open up, uh, I would say permitting avenues for the owner of that property to use. Indoor zoning tool processes for him to use, uh, to redevelop that site.
Does that need to be approved by the, the people of Ashland in a town meeting?
Yes. Yeah, that is, it's a very thorough, uh, long process that takes place, Joe. Uh, it's a zoning process. Uh, typically forty R processes start with the Board of Selectmen and the developer. Because, and they're very project specific. Uh, with that said, the planning board, uh, almost kind of i- is. There, there's a point that in the, in the near future, Mr. Britt, the owner of the property, will be presenting in front of the planning board. Or will be asking to present to the planning board. And, and I will be asking to put him in, on, on him, on the agenda. Uh, but to answer your question, Joe, the zoning, because it is a zoning piece. Uh, there is a public hearing held by the planning board, and then that zoning piece is, um. Moves through town meeting, and then it will be a town meeting, uh, adopting the forty R district. Which would be at that time, very definitive and laid out and, uh, I would say developed. Very project specific. So, the town almost, um. And, and in, in, in some of the projects that I've seen, and, and I've just kinda looked. It's custom zoning, and it's very project specific. And so, the forty R district is actually customized around the project. That is being proposed.
Great. So, so, i- in, in terms of the meetings where the planning board. Has discussions about the zoning proposal, are those joint meetings of the select board and the developer? Uh, or are we going to begin having some joint meetings with the select board on this topic? How's that work?
I, I don't know, Joe, to tell you the truth. I think if, if it's, you know, I, I think we can have joint meetings. I can propose that with the select board. I can propose that with Michael. I really haven't talked, I really have, you know, thought. Through the logistical aspects of holding joint meetings off of Zoom, uh, which I would happy, I'm sure we can. It's actually easier to tell you the truth, and get everyone in the same room. I agree. Uh, the project's not at that point yet, you know, and so, they're kind of sketching out big picture. Ideas, uh, on the project. Um, and I would say in the next kind of month or two, I would say they'll be coming in front of the planning board. But I just wanted to make sure every, that is, that project's on everyone's radar.
I, I, on the, um, on the, uh, the friendly forty B in the MBTA access road, where was? Where was that? Where is the structure cited as, as approved by the select board?
Uh, it is.
High or low?
On the high side or the low side?
Yeah.
It's on the high side.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's right next to the, it's right next to the, uh, serious development. And this process, the project, which is known as Lot Two, was permitted by, with their, their, their old, there's permits that. That have been granted, I believe, by the planning board, uh, for certain projects that obviously have run out of time and have not been active. But I have seen some old projects.
So, with, with it being cited high, I think that was gonna avoid a ton of. Work, like earthwork, which, a- and preserved open space in woods in the lower portion of the, of the parcel, right? And that was the, that's where we were trying to get to, correct? So, we did that, that, that's what the select board got done there?
I, I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One, one, one last, well, one, one other item, Peter. I think, um, I think we need to get, uh, uh, my opinion, I think we should have the, um. Uh, solar array outfit, uh, Joe, for solar, come back, like, and, and talk to us. I, I think the. I think I, I wanna do a review. I, I personally would like to do a review with them of some of the screening and those plants. And I wanna, I wanna make sure that, um, that the town of Ashland gets. All of the screening and all of the finished kind of landscaping on that solar array that. Was described. It was very extensive, and I just see a bunch of, I do see a bunch of dead stuff out there. So, I, I, I just wanna make sure that, uh, we're paying attention to that, and they, they know we're paying attention to that, and they. Follow through with the things that they committed to.
I can tell you, Joe, in the last week, they planted new trees, and actually, yesterday, they planted, I believe, sixteen new white pines, which are between six and seven feet tall.
And I don't drive by there twice a day anymore, so I missed it. I apologize. Well, that's great.
It's all, as I do, it's on my radar, Joe.
It's part of the rounds. It's part of the, the route, right? Well, that's great news. Cool.
Exactly, so, uh, but they did plant trees out there. It's been on my, it's been on my radar. They had not received temporary, they, they still have. Uh, I've been working with them for the last, I would say, since July fourth, Joe.
Got it.
Regarding that screening, and so, I can touch base with you offline, but they, they have, just, they just completed plantings, uh, out there yesterday.
Excellent. Thanks, Peter. Appreciate it.
No sweat.
Okay, we have a motion. To adjourn the meeting. Nobody wants, everybody's just having too much fun.
Yeah. Can we stay for another hour? I make a motion.
I want Trish to give me a link to the seminar on airing a meeting. I feel like I've lost control of the whole thing. No, I'm, I'm. Hopefully, I'm hanging in there. Okay, we're making it through.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-six.
Don't move.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Rubiton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye. Pass is five zero zero. Thank you, and good night, everybody.
Good night.